This, excuse me, I don't have my notes for the meeting. Compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act and notice of requirements has been satisfied. Notice that this meeting was published in the record newspapers as well as remind the district listservs and Facebook. Can we please all stand for twenty minutes?
Ms. Troy?
President.
Ms. De Jesus?
President.
Mr. Park?
President.
Ms. Rockham?
President.
Mrs. Zepka?
President.
Mrs. Segal?
President.
Ms. Thompson? Ms. Wilds? Vice President Mountain?
President.
President Lake?
President.
We have a forum. Also in attendance is our Acting Superintendent, Dr. Caramanos, as well as our Board Attorney, Mr. Lepera. And also present is our Student Rep, Hannah Choy.
So we will go into the first public comment section on agenda-related items. We have two minutes to speak these stuff up and provide your name and address. Anyone from the public room, speak.
Can I speak from here or do you want me to get up there?
I guess over here.
So you can carry me over?
Oh, yes, so you can carry me.
Martha, there, I want to run a row these. I have a couple. I'll give a preview for the second section. I have a question, it's non-budget, but it'll have to do with the construction projects. I'll be looking at their status and can and what they're, what they are operating out for the second public. I have a question on item L. It lists the employee on the, there's a column there, and the position on the right, extra responsible. The question I have is, are these part of the regular daily responsibilities of those people, or are these stipend adjustments? I'd like to know that, because I actually, like, let's issue stipends, and I wanted to show whether that was part of it or if there was an additional cost also for that. For Eric, it looks like we're accumulating a fair amount of cash at the end of the year. Ground numbers, I think it's around three and a half million dollars in the reserve. Year-end operating budget, like, around two and a half million dollars collected. You're also asking, which is an at, at year of end, end of the year request for transfers up to two million dollars. I know that means it's up to, it could be a dollar, it could be two million, but if we're running about two and a half million dollars already through May, I'm not sure I did, which is possible, it hasn't been hard today. How much do you anticipate we're putting in there, because we're carrying a lot of cash? Now, in a business corporation, that's great, you know, you're running at the year, you've got a profit, but instead what you do is distribute the surplus to the tax, to the shareholders, in this case, with the taxpayer. So I'm not too, you know, considering we had, we got kind of screwed by the governor in total of, was it a million dollars for excess benefits? Why, we didn't consider we're running this kind of a balance. If I could make a moment, offset that, healthy taxpayers, I will, that was a question I had. I'll probably have a couple other things, but I was gonna have things spread out that they won't have in here all the time in New York, unless they're technically attached. Also, the, the, well, that's like, I was gonna talk about the middle school basketball, which was brought up last time, there were ten and dollars in the paper, and they're, they're pretty good. And I went to a couple of games, and they scored, I think I would've talked about how many runs they scored. They could've scored a lot more, because the coach held him in one of my, they could've, they could've scored three hundred bucks. It was really a pretty good team, but Jackie's a softball coach, and she's got a pretty good core to work with next year.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public room, speak? Move on to forward student representative comments, so after we answer our questions.
So, item L, the list of positions, those are not stipend positions, those are just additional, additional responsibilities that we have, and these are all state or federal requirements, just additional responsibilities, or some, and some are board policies, so additional responsibilities we all get to take on.
Fine.
Thank you.
And, construction?
President Lee, is it all right if I just follow up with a question to Mr. Zepka?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a question. Just to clarify, on the, on the project, are you talking about the projects that are currently budgeted in this year's budget? In twenty-two, twenty-three?
The construction projects, projects that are in progress.
In progress?
In progress, yeah, status on, on, on the progress, or those that are budgeted, but maybe, maybe they've been deferred.
Okay. So let me just hold on one second.
I thought, I thought they had, we could handle that.
Generally, the, the projects, I mean, I don't have it pulled up, but the middle school project at the central office, that's, that's pretty much a hundred percent complete, with the exception of a couple of pieces of furniture. As far as the Board of Ed Office, there's a couple of items that are still in the process of getting completed, like the bathroom renovation on the second floor, or first floor, as well as some flooring, and also some furniture. As far as the locker replacement, that, last time I checked, with Mr. Woods, that we're waiting for the vendor to actually install it.
At the high school, right?
At the high school, correct. So it was delayed from the vendor ordering, and we have the purchase order in, so last time I checked, with Mr. Woods, he indicated that hopefully it should be end of June, sometime July. The one project that's still pending is the ACS bathrooms, student bathrooms, that one is still, that might be, depending on timing, I mean, obviously it's in June, that might be pushed off to further, further years, which what'll happen is anytime we budget a project from Capital Reserve, and we can't do it, whether it's timing constrained or cost constrained, based on our estimate, that money we budgeted goes back into the Capital Reserve, and then we reappropriate it either through the budget or through a transfer during the year. The other question that you had relating to surplus, so right now, as we, you know, obviously it's June twentieth, we're finalizing the last payroll, so I should have more exact figures, but roughly, what happens with the, with the reserve resolutions that we do, those are kind of open-ended, and the reason why is it gives flexibility to the district on deciding, once that final number comes in from our auditors, once they certify it, then we can have a further discussion with our finance committee, as far as, you know, where is the best benefit of the district to move that, that excess surplus. But historically, the district's roughly been giving back about six hundred thousand, six hundred, five seventy-five was budgeted in tax relief from that excess surplus number, so that's something that we would have to regenerate in the budget to offset the future year's budgets, and then once that basically takes into account, with also the reserve changes that we budgeted, which one of the big items that this board and administration did was that all the projects that we budgeted in twenty-three, twenty-four, were fully funding it from Capital Reserve. So it is a way of giving it back to the taxpayer, rather than increasing, you know, the tax levy, so that's, you know, that's the advantage of having it in a reserve, because you could kind of allocate it a lot evenly, so the tax rate stays, you know, flat, you don't have big spikes. So once, once those numbers come finalized, then, then those reserves basically will decide, you know, how much we want to put into maintenance. Historically, we've been budgeting in the budget as tax relief for maintenance, about two hundred and seventy-five thousand, so that is going into the operations every year, so we have to regenerate that. As well as this year, we, we added a tuition reserve, since we have a sending-receiving relationship with EdOrder, that'll give flexibility, if there's any large tuition adjustments that negatively impact this district, we could put money into that reserve. What happens is, but if we don't need it, it also has to go back to the taxpayer. It's, it's under statute, we can't keep it there forever. So as far as the surplus number, I don't want to give you something today, but we, we were, rough estimate, we're basically, we're able to regenerate typically the surplus that we historically, you know, get back into the taxpayer, so that is the outlook. Also, we were looking to, we were able to regenerate, based on my estimate, the money that we are utilizing currently in this year's budget for Capital Reserve, which I believe is almost four hundred thousand, so all those projects, which I indicated to you, that money that we took out of Reserve, we could replenish. Also, something to think about is, is any future capital projects, so once the state comes back with a rod grant funding, and we decide what projects we want to do in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, that's something that, because we basically took out a big chunk of that, I think it's like around one point seven million, we want to replenish that, you know, that piece. If we're, if we're looking to do all projects that we budgeted, we might have to kind of, you know, decide, once the state determines what we've been awarded, and that should happen end of September, roughly. So I mean, that's roughly, you know, a good estimate, but hopefully August, the next-
Any seniors, please come to the main office to pick up your diploma. Seniors, please come to the main office to pick up your diploma.
So hopefully August, I should have, you know, all the payrolls are finalized, any, any, you know, casual pays and all that, which the big chunk of it is, is payroll. Once that is done, then the next step is our business office is going through all the open POs, trying to validate what's valid, what's not, what we could cancel, what items are backordered that we're not going to get, so we're going through that, that process. So hopefully, August meeting, the second, I should have a good estimate, and then our auditors come in, and they verify, you know, make sure everything was moved properly, there's no issues, there's no reclassifications, and then they'll finalize that number, which is end of the year.
Thank you. I was, I do have actually one comment regarding, relating to agenda item MA. I was contacted by a parent within the timeframe to provide comment from the email, but because there are specifics about particular students, I'm not going to disclose the actual, the name of the parent for the student that was emailed with the topic I'd like to talk about. Topic was item MA, it was actually in support of the, the Student Mental Health and Wellness Coordinator, but the subject of the email was essentially, in a nutshell, concerns that a student that has a 504, but did not qualify for an IEP, couldn't, or felt that they weren't getting enough of the special services that they might require, or counseling from our, from the school district. And the specific questions that were provided by the parent, excuse me, were whether this position, the wellness position, excuse me, the Student Mental Health and Wellness Coordinator position, was it, is this only for one position? What school will they be stationed in? And the third question was, will this position start in September, or will it take longer to implement? And really, the gist of the, the questions, though, also led towards the concerns that, that students that maybe don't qualify for an IEP, that they, they may, like, how can the school district maybe look into providing additional support for those students? Because there's, and one specific point is that there, that student was clinically diagnosed as having anxiety, so that question is, how can we try to help do more? Or what, or what do we already offer that maybe wasn't explored at the time? Yes?
Yes, okay, yes, I can answer those questions. So first, yes, it is only one, one position for the district, it is a district coordinator, a Student Mental Health and Wellness Coordinator. They will be spending time though in all three buildings. This person, the position is meant to support all three of our buildings, and the, so they won't be stationed specifically in one place, they will have locations in all three buildings, and the expectation is that they do get and rotate through all three, all three buildings. Seniors, please come to the office for your diplomas. Seniors, diplomas. And the hope is that the position starts in September, so the sooner we, you know, approve the position, the sooner we get to post for the position, the sooner we get to hire someone. But our intention is to start this position in September, pending, you know, all paperwork and certifications. And, you know, some of the work we've been doing behind the scenes, a lot of the things that we need to set up, you know, kind of internally, part of it is, you'll see, a few, a few agendas ago, we approved the contract with stages alarming to do an MTSS needs assessment, which is our multiple-tiered system of supports. So it's really gonna help us outline, not just academic interventions, but also these behavioral and these social-emotional interventions that we can put in place, so it doesn't have to get to, you know, severe interventions. We, we have structures in place that help us and guide us along, and give us opportunities to support the children before we get to a point where we need outside help. Thank you.
Any other board member comments on agenda-related items?
So, it was kind of Arthur's question about the reserve. So, yeah, so you, Martha mentioned about the reserve. We just also came up in the finance committee meeting, like, what is an adequate reserve, right? Because we're not, like you said, a, a public company sitting, we want a healthy balance sheet, but we don't want to hoard people's money, it's not an endowment, right? It's not a gift to us. So we asked Eric, I think he said somewhere between five and ten percent is good to keep for unseen major events that happen, so we don't have to go out for a referendum to the public in emergency. If Eric could, you know, clarify the percentage, and I think we're within that. So our goal is not to keep building it to a ten million dollar pile of money, we just have to pick a percentage that we feel comfortable, that if emergency does pop up, we're happy.
Yeah, so what I was indicating to the finance committee- That we had this past week was, or, I think, was it, I think last-
Last Thursday?
Last week, yeah. So they, they commented on, you know, reserve balances, what are, you know, what's a good reserve balance, so, I mean, historically, the state comes out with regulations, what you could keep, the max, so that is in line with the long-range facility plan, so they say, you can't have a reserve if you don't have a plan on how you're gonna spend it. So the way to have a plan is, you need to come up with a long-range facility plan of projects that need to get replaced, you know, over multiple years. So roughly, the, the most recent long-range facility plan that the district completed, which was like about a year ago, roughly, it's about forty million dollars in projects that, you know, not necessarily next year, or two years, three years, but it, you know, could be over five years, ten years. Those are projects that, at some point, the district will have to finance, forty, you know, roughly forty million, so that's the max, so roughly, you know, without going out to referendum or whatever, forty million dollars. So that's the max we could have in a Capital Reserve. Average district, school districts, I kind of indicated, you know, the most average is probably ten percent of their operating budget, you know, so roughly, we're here, you know, we're almost thirty-eight, thirty-nine million. So I mean, average, you know, a lot of districts, you know, to kind of fit projects year in, year out, which, you know, without constantly going to the tax rate, you know, doing referendums, and because it slows down the process as far as, you know, you know, going out to vote, and also, you know, there could be a cost, depending on if it's a special election, so it kind of allows districts to kind of get things done sooner, you know, for the need relating to the students. So roughly ten million, ten percent of, of the budget, so roughly, you know, three, four million is probably like the, you know, the bottom, you know, that's where we should be at least at, you know, if I had to say, you know, roughly four million dollars is a good number consistently, you know, and then from there, obviously, you could grow it, but you need a plan to, you know, how you're looking to spend it. But once it's in the reserve, you can't, you know, you can't just take it out for anything, it has to be in line with, with the project approved by the state.
Can I speak? I understand a reserve, I think a decent reserve is good, I just want to make sure it doesn't get run away after we overturned the last time with the project for expansion and the way it was used, when it wasn't explained properly to public. You need that reserve, I mean, you've been running four million most of the year, you're down a little bit now from where it was, I think you're three point six right now, which is fine, I just wanted a explanation, and you having, like, I was also looking at the two million dollars, you know, that's coming at the end of the year, I wanted to make, where's that gonna go? Just watching, just watching the money, that's all, watching the money.
Just to clarify, the, the three and a half million is total of all the reserves, including, you know, the insurance, maintenance. Capital reserve is roughly two million, yeah, roughly, you know, one point something, but the, the resolutions isn't not to exceed, so it's not saying that we, we're gonna have two million, I mean, we might, you know, in total surplus, maybe it's one point two million, right? So, you know, that, that'll get divvied up into all the various reserves, but that would, that would just give it flexibility, so if this, you know, board and finance committee, if, you know, let's say we do have one point eight, you know, it might be beneficial to put a lot of it more into the Capital Reserve because of the, of the projects, rather than maintenance, so this way we don't hand tie and have to put it into, you know, a maintenance reserve when, you know, it's beneficial in capital.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members with comments on agenda-related items, or any comments from Hannah? Any other board members? Okay. So we will move on to the approval of consent agenda items, can I have a motion, please? Sid, second, Isaac? And, okay, any, if you, any items for discussion? Any items for discussion? We have a motion in a second? Okay. See, I'm gonna roll call, please. Ms. Troy?
Yes.
Ms. De Jesus?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Rockham?
Yes.
Mrs. Zepka?
Yes.
Mrs. Segal?
Yes.
Vice President Mountain?
Yes.
And President Lake?
Yes.
Motion carries on consent agenda items.
So that brings us to administrative reports.
Okay, all right, so, since we last met on June sixth, I believe, we have had lots of end-of-year activities, from kindergarten and pre-K moving up celebrations to senior week, that was, also, we had some air quality issues in between, but, you know, we're here, we're at this point. Tonight, we graduated our class of twenty-twenty-three, we had two hundred and thirteen graduates tonight, and when you see the list of their post-secondary plans, you will be amazed and just completely proud of the education that we provide and the good work that our kids do. So we will share a lot more of that information in our next newsletter, which will be sent out at the end of the month, so keep an eye out for that, for the newsletter. We'll also have more, you know, just pictures and stuff from all the different ceremonies. We, so tomorrow, we have ACS grade four moving up ceremony, it will be here in the morning, and then tomorrow evening, we have LMS eighth grade graduation, which will also be here in the evening. Few things before we pass it off, before, for my comments, I did want to highlight in the agenda, we, I did want to congratulate Hannah, she was elected to represent the students on the board for next year, so I did want to congratulate Hannah. She will be one of the three representatives, there was a tie amongst the students, and we felt like we wanted to give all the students the opportunity to share and voice, and Hannah nearly have done such a great, such a great job this year, that we wanted to continue that and promote that. So, but we will figure out what that schedule looks like as we get into next year. Also, I wanted to remind any families that are listening, you know, over the summer, I know we, our summer, our food program, our food services don't really run over the summer, but we do have, our website does include locations for food action support, the Center for Food Action in Angledwood, the USDA Summer Food Programs, those are all, that information is all available on our website, so if there are any families in need, or if you know of any families in need, please share that information with them. In addition to food services, are, we do have information on other types of family services, so if, over the summertime, if you, your children, or your families need any type of support, please reach out to us, so we can give you the resources that you need, but you can always contact us, you can contact Care Plus, Bergen County Family Services, all of that is on our district website, but please, the families listening or the people listening, please keep that in mind, and please promote that, that we have, that we are here to support you. And then finally, I did want to, oh, before I get to that, so I did want to, I know Arthur had mentioned the LMS softball, we did, I did share that last meeting, it was really exciting, I saw in the news article that last year, in twenty-twenty-two, they were seven and one, and this year they were ten and, ten and oh? So we're very excited, we're picking up a lot of steam with the softball, with the girl softball at the middle school, so we're excited for what they'll do when they, when they get to high school, it'd be great, we're all looking forward to it, our eyes are on them, no added pressure, though.
Good luck, is Emerson at a fabulous?
There you go, bring us the good luck. So great segue. I did want to take a moment to thank the board, this is my last board meeting as the Acting Superintendent, I will go back to my role as Assistant Superintendent, which I'm very excited to go back to. I did want to thank the board for the opportunity, this has been a really great opportunity for me, for me in my profession, and even just as my, my personal growth, I feel like I've learned a lot, I've built great relationships, I feel, with all of you, and I appreciate all of those relationships, and all of the opportunities you have given me. I have, yeah, I also have the opportunity to build a very strong relationship with Dr. Gaitens, and I am very excited to have him on board, I truly believe he's going to take us into that next step, you know, as we always talk about, you know, we're good, but we want to get to great, and I really do believe Dr. Gaitens, and with all of us together, with this board, with the administration, with the staff that we have here, and our students, we will get there. So, just a thank you, I appreciate everything, I appreciate the community for allowing and giving me these experiences as well, and for our staff and students for making the last six months very memorable. So, thank you. But I'll still be here August third as Assistant Superintendent, so I'm not going anywhere.
Just following thunder, I was gonna make a comment later on, but, yeah, Sandy, I can't thank you enough for the last six months. It has definitely been, you, you've been the glue that's kind of held everything together in between, and not to say anything about your other roles as well, we'd love having you in the district, thank you so much for the past six months. It's been very interesting, and, I mean, I've learned a lot through your experience as well, and I'm also very happy to have Dr. Gaitens coming on board, and for all the excellent and wonderful things that you will do together, including the strategic plan, so I congratulate you, I thank you so much, I think the board, I, I think I can speak for the board in saying that, you know, we couldn't have asked for, for a better person to help us tie, and glad that you had the opportunity to do that, so thank you very much. So, next, Eric, do you have any other comments?
Activate this.
Just to piggyback off of what Dr. Caramano said with food service, one of the things we did integrate, thanks to the, our tech department, spearheaded by Mr. Samuel, we integrated our lunch balances, which is through PaySchools, that's our online application to, you know, students have to, to, you know, charge meals, put money on an account, to make it, you know, paper, uh, paperless. One of the things we did was we integrated that balance now, it is pulled into the Genesis parent portal, so for all parents that want to, you know, better, easy access, they log into their parent portal account for each student, and they'll, they'll see the balance right into their account, so they could constantly monitor it a lot easier, and then what it does is, there's also a link, a hyperlink, that they click on to replenish that account once it goes into a negative, so the instructions for that is on our website, which will indicate, you know, how you go about it, which is, which is very easy. Also, as Dr. Caramano's mentioned, you know, we had a graduation of twelfth graders, so for the parents that are not sure, you know, what do I do with the balance, what are my options, on our district website, we have an application form that you have, you know, basically two options, you could either request a refund, if you do have a positive balance, or you could transfer the money to another child that, you know, is maybe in a, in a lower grade, and then I'll continue on with that child until they graduate. Also, if there is any negative balances, you know, we, we do request that, you know, if they have any questions with it, that, you know, it gets up to date, you know, as soon as possible, especially if that student is no longer, you know, in district.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, so we're gonna move into our committee reports, and because Ms. Thompson isn't here, Kim will continue Assistant Education. And if you, if you have safety and security and--
I might need Dr. Caramano to refresh my memory, but for education, we met on June 12th, and we mostly discussed what's on the agenda tonight. M, education, A, student mental health and wellness coordinator, and the committee was really excited to approve that, and to approve that description. We think it's really necessary for, for the district. Did we discuss the trips? Oh, yep. We did discuss the STEM trip that the high school students are taking to Switzerland next year, and the France trip that's also approved tonight. I think that was it for education. For safety and security, we actually ended up pushing our meeting to August. We wanna try to find a time with Dr. Gaitens, so we can kind of finally meet with him, and we're looking forward to that. And for food, we had our last meeting of the year on June 12th. We really just did an overview of the year. We had a great year of working with Machios. We really had lots of improvements over the year with the quality of vegan options and getting both salad bars up and running at both the middle school and the high school. We also discussed just keeping up with the grants with Mr. Tomasevic, so we could continue to provide more community events like we did this year. And I really just wanted to thank Mr. Tomasevic for, for the year. He's such a great partner with the food committee. Any question we ever have, he always answers it right away, and he, and he is a really great liaison with Machios. So thank you, Mr. Tomasevic.
Thank you. That brings us to finance and planning. We did, we met on the fifteenth. Actually, a lot of what Eric was discussing before was covered in our finance and planning meeting, basically including the reserve and surplus discussion. We also discussed resolutions to pay bills over the summer, actually increasing the threshold from thirty-two thousand. We also approved, discussed approval of a couple of the vendors that we've seen on the agenda for tonight, as well as exploring a new file management system. We basically, with some of the litigation that we have, we've learned that our file management system actually doesn't meet some insurance requirements, I believe. So we're looking to upgrade that, which will also help us just in general with management of old historic files, because we essentially have to keep everything almost forever. So having a good system in place is, is, would definitely be in the, in the district's best interest in case any other incidents come up in the future, so that everything's organized. We also discussed the very initial phases of a capital projects plan that would happen in conjunction, really, with a strategic plan, but it's really just the very initial phases of discussion that will happen after July first, essentially. So those are all the topics that we covered in finance and planning. And the green team, Xanthie, so we just--
Yes, so we did submit our final submission for the district and all three buildings. We did have, it was due like last Wednesday, last Friday. So we did, knock on wood, because someone, anything could change, but we are looking at bronze certification for all three buildings and the district. We did not get to silver, but we have goals. So we will, we will achieve silver at some point in my time here. You know, Mr. Lee does--
What standard? There are several building standards. What building standard did you meet the bronze?
Uh, we met in all three buildings for the--
The lead standard?
No, it's not--
Oh, no. No, it's for our sustainable jersey. Yeah. So it's for our sustainable jersey. It's for all the green, the green initiatives that we've done in the district. You know, the plan now that we've submitted, and hopefully, and like I said, hopefully we will receive the bronze certification. We do wanna restart that committee and make it more of a consistent committee that meets over time versus just when we have to certify.
So the hard work is getting the certification. Maintaining it is actually fairly easy if you can, because you just put all the way at it with multiple, multiple people throughout. You have a, you have a three-year period to maintain it. Arthur, it's very different from the, the Green Council and the, what you're talking about. This is a sustainable jersey, having access to it, and at the various levels gives you access to various grant opportunities. So, and a lot of the things we're basically already doing, it's just a matter of making sure that we're documenting it appropriately and then reporting it. And once you do that and submit all of that, like, that's the hard work, is gathering all that stuff that we do. Some of the things, yes, we had to implement or create, but for the most part, once you have that certification, again, it's very easy to keep it up. It's just a matter of staying on top of it. It's just like the moment you're long, you know, we do it every week, it's no problem, but you let it go a month, and you're pulling out the weed whacker. So that's, that's essentially-- So that brings us, oh, Norina's not here. I don't know, I think Community Relations, they met, I believe, just before our last meeting. I don't think they met again. Is anyone-- Okay.
We did not, at this-- We did not, at this point, you know, we did talk about this at the last meeting. We are moving away from remind, and that'll happen over the summer. Dr. Gaitens and I have already started working with Parent Square, and our tech, our tech department has helped with the implementation of Parent Square. So they've started integrating through our Genesis, and they started that process. So we will develop more rollout plans as, after July first, which is almost here.
Policy, we haven't had any, any policy meetings, Eric.
Yeah, we don't have any meetings. The local, they do, so we need to ask for a year.
And that brings us to our two representative singular.
I'm gonna start out with a comment from Amelia, who couldn't hear this night. Quote, "I thank you for the resolution being passed."
Hold on, Hannah, hold on a second. Yeah, so you can, and we're just watching here, too.
Okay, this is from Amy again. Quote, "I thank you for the resolution being passed tonight. It seriously meant a lot to me, and if Xanthie would have let me, I would have been at this meeting. It's been a pleasure, and I love you all. I'll be back soon."
I just wanted her to enjoy graduation night.
But on my part, I really also wanted to thank the board, and sorry that you guys couldn't get rid of me, but I definitely learned a lot from this experience, more about the board and more about the district in general. And I think next year, I learned a lot of things that I wanna implement, getting more student voice. And on a more futuristic note, something that I talked to Mr. Calder about, and I got approved, was holding kind of like a forum question and answer seminar with the actual students. So if they have any feedback for the board, sometimes it might be scary to come, you know, to these board meetings, so they can just bring it to us. So hopefully we'll have a better connection next year. So, yeah, thank you.
Hannah, you've done a wonderful job as well.
Thank you.
We're excited to have you again next year.
You're not trying to get rid of me. I love, I love the idea of some kind of a forum, less forum. We can keep it under a quorum and then have a meeting like that, especially so students get a better idea of what we do as a board, how they can potentially impact or make changes to policymaking and things of that nature, and just to help empower themselves and to be a part of the process. It's very important, you know, not only on the school level, but on the public government level, to understand that. So I would more than welcome that process. Thank you. On the topic-- So on the topic of Ms. Morello, I know that she's not here, but, and I know this will get to her eventually. But we actually have a resolution, is it on?
Yes.
Yes, so we approved it. So there's, we have a resolution on for Ms. Amelia Morello. I kinda like to read it very quickly. So, "Whereas, Ms. Amelia Morello, a student at Leonia High School in Bergen County, has served with dedication as a student representative to the, to the Leonia Board of Education for 2021 to 2022 and 2022 to 2023 school years. And whereas, Ms. Morello has executed her duties as the Leonia Board's liaison to the student community with dedication and enthusiasm, and has adeptly presented a student perspective through well-timed reports on innovative and wide-ranging topics that were beneficial to the Leonia Board members and school district administration. And whereas, Ms. Morello's academic and extracurricular career demonstrates that, demonstrates that she is an accomplished student who has made valuable contributions and lasting impacts to her school and for her student committee, community. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of Leonia Board of Education and Acting Superintendent of Schools extend their sincere congratulations and appreciation to Ms. Amelia Morello for a job well done, and be it further resolved that the Leonia Board of Education and the Acting Superintendent of Schools acknowledge Ms. Amelia Morello's academic excellence and talents and wish her continued success in her future endeavors." Now, I know she's not here. Hopefully she can watch the YouTube video. She has a perfectly valid reason not to be here. But this is a resolution that we're presenting to her as a senior graduating, and hopefully this will get to her very soon. So, that takes us to item, oh, on the agenda. I didn't skip anything, did I? Okay. So that brings us to new business. We have four items on our new business. Can I have a motion, please, on new business? Kim, in a second. Isaac? Any items for discussion? Any items for discussion? A through B? Okay, see, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Ms. De Jesus?
Yes.
Ms. De Par?
Yes.
Ms. Rockout?
Yes.
Ms. De Zepka?
Yes.
Ms. De Sago?
Yes.
Vice President Melman?
Yes.
And President Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries on new business.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to our second public comment on non-agenda-related items. Anyone wishing to speak, please step up to our makeshift podium, provide your name and address. You have a two-minute time limit.
Brian Gaitens, 4598 La Road, Virginia, Jersey. I wanted to take a moment in public to acknowledge the gratitude I have towards faculty and staff, and the students of the Leonia and Midland Town and the school district. I've had a chance, six months, to meet them on multiple occasions, and I want the Board of Education to know that in all times and all terms, they've represented the district very, very well. They spoke of the pride of the work that takes place here. They were honest and forthright, and I thought it was me, and I appreciate the fact that they were willing to give their time to meet with me. I've grown more excited for my transition July first, which I think is not the head circle to be red calendar, to be as possible. So I just wanna thank, I would thank Eric and I think Kim for helping with the transition. I was helping, especially if it's not the, Eric, that we said to her about, after your trip, she's been a fine steward of the school district these past six months. It's my pleasure to work with her when necessary. The district has been in very, very good hands, so I wanna thank her for that, for all the time and all that she's, the grace and graciousness that she's helped me as I've transitioned in. I look forward to July first, and I thank you for the full confidence in me. And last, but not least, congratulations to the class of 2023. I'm delighted I can be a graduation. Congratulations to the board and another school here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Arthur?
Well, I remembered just some, but I'd forgotten on the first part, and we entered the second part with the project, so I won't be entering that. Arthur's, I have 125 roll these. I have three things. One for Vic, during movement on the forensic investigation into the borough, into the town's, the district's insurance carrier from many, many, many years ago. That was one question. I was, what I forgot to ask was, I was reading about the psychiatrist, psychologist that you're gonna hire, and my question was gonna be, is this gonna be a new position, an additional position? And I found, I discovered you don't have one. There's gonna be a new position. So my question, since I went to ACS, to school here, and we, there was always a school psychologist. So when did they stop? I'm, I'm frankly shocked that you don't have one on staff. How long, how many years have they been not had a psychiatrist? It was actually amongst the kids, there's always a junk, you know, who's gonna go see the shrink, you know, we goofed back and forth and everything else, but there was, and the valuable service. I was really pretty surprised to, to read that and learn in the first section that it's, it's because you don't have one. And Xanthie mentioned something about air quality. How do you, what was that about? And how do you measure, because air quality is a, is an ongoing thing. It's good, it's bad. It's measured sometimes at a spot in time, or it's measured over time on a truck recorder, and then you can average it, because, you know, there's a lot of things that affect that. And finally, I wanna know if Brian's gonna ride his bike to, to work, to school here, or if he's gonna ride, drive his, his truck.
Can I show the photo?
Oh, sorry. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak? Yeah, I just, I have a photo. It's not of Dr. Gaitens, but it is of his bike outside the board offices. That's all I'm gonna say.
On a Sunday.
I did some research on him, and there is, there are pictures of him on his bikes online.
We've already heard many stories about his running adventures, and at one point he said, yeah, it's, you know, thirty hours, it's, that's, that's for the normal people. The, the, the special ones get thirty-four. I was like, normal people can run thirty hours? I don't know.
What time do you-- Over years, I can do that.
Yes. So we're very excited for his energy and all he will bring. To answer the other two questions, the more serious questions, the school psychologist, we do have school psychologists on staff. We have three. We have one per building. So this isn't a school psychologist position. This is a student mental health and wellness coordinator, so it's a different type of position. The licensing could be a school, a psychologist license, a social worker. We kinda left it open-ended, so that way we had some flexibility on the type of candidate that we would, you know, we would, we would find or we would attract. So this isn't, so we, we've always had, well, for as long as you've been in school, we've had school psychologists, and we still do. We have three on our child study team, one per school. We have social workers. We have behaviorists. We have our learning disabilities future consultants. So our child study team is very robust, but this is an additional position, a new position. And the air quality I was referring to was the air quali, the Canadian fires that blew down the wind. But we did receive, from the Department of Health, we did receive, we applied for the, the air purifiers. Yeah, we, we applied for the air purifiers in our buildings, and we do have air purifiers across all three of our buildings. LHS were still waiting for them to get delivered, but they were a grant through the Department of Health. So when it did happen, ACS, LMS, they were able to turn their air purifiers right on, and really, really helped. But again, we're waiting for the LHS ones to come in.
I think I left a piece with the emergency insurance. I know that our office is working with the other attorneys and the insurance archaeologists on that. I haven't spoken with the associate who's working on it in our office about this, most recent update, but is there anything new since last time, Eric, or nothing yet?
The last thing is, so we, we secured, so besides an insurance archaeologist to be in and try to find insurance, which they did a great job, but there is still gaps in coverage. The next step is that this district did, you know, to kind of move that liability onto insurance out of the district, was that we secured an insurance coverage council that now dives in deeper with these insurance coverage people that the insurance archaeologist was able to identify, but now, you know, tries to hone in on these gaps to make sure that, you know, we're, we're getting the right documentation, that they're not saying that we didn't have coverage through them, but we did have coverage, so they're diving in even deeper. But it hasn't been, you know, it's not finalized yet, closing all the gaps, covering the, the periods that, you know, that the claims relate to. So there is still gaps. So there is still gaps. But this administration, in the meantime, and that drew down our surplus, we have an open purchase order relating to the special counsel who's handling it outside of Mr. LaFara's office. Roughly, that's like $300,000. So we constantly, you know, are setting ourselves up where if we do start getting these insurance, all these legal fees coming in, which they're, you know, right now they're very low, but they might start picking up. We have some, you know, funds available that we kind of, you know, secured based on our estimated budget.
More interesting, the gaps. I'm trying to, hopefully we have coverage and you can unload it all on the...
Correct.
I mean, only if that coverage is a point in time if they crook that the allegation was made.
Correct.
Doesn't matter if you had, then that coverage after that.
Correct, and that's one of the things that this insurance coverage council is trying to determine also is, you know, how much do they be liable, you know, because they're, you know, some of it is that they're basing on like, you know, oh, we only covered it, you know, maybe two months out of the 12 months, so they're doing, you know, two 12s, which is not, you know, it dives in a little bit deeper and he's working on that. But to piggyback off of what President Lee said, through this hole, trying to find insurance, dive it into our records, that's why we're also, you know, having an outside company come in to kind of do better index filing of our records. So maybe things will come up once we have that outside benefit coming in and, you know, sorting it, indexing it, coding it. You know, there might be stuff that we can uncover that, you know, that kind of slip through the cracks and make sure that, you know, we're looking at everything.
Any other, I'm trying to, like, any other board members have any comments?
I do.
Yes?
So a few things. So my kids are graduating tomorrow and I want to thank Mr. Sapo and really the work that the teachers and the counselors have done at the middle school. Usually sometime we use, we hear about what goes wrong and not what goes right. And being a parent, but also a principal, I know that it's a lot of work, especially working with little schoolers. So I definitely want to thank him, the teachers for always being, you know, there for the kids and being able to put up with me, you know, being, but definitely he definitely cares a lot and my kids have had great teachers. And I think I know a little bit about teaching, so I'm very thankful and I hope we're able to retain those teachers and to continue developing them because it's much needed. And secondly, I want to thank Mr. Calendar for a wonderful graduation. It takes a lot of work planning something like that and taking into consideration every detail. Congratulations to our students that are going to great schools and that takes a lot of work as well. And I hope the best and I think it has been a great year. My graduation is on Friday as well, so there's a lot of emotions, you know, as a principal, as a parent, but I think we all work for what's best for the kids and that what, you know, that is something that we should always remember, so, thank you.
Now, Mr. Jesus, you started it. I can't wait to. I want to, also my second one is graduating from ACS tomorrow and I have two boys, one in middle school now, the second one is out of ACS, then it's a bye-bye, right? So I really want to thank Dr. Martinez and Mr. Brier for all those wonderful school years my kids had. My first one is happy at LMS and second one, he's also happy. They never, kind of, maybe a few times they complained that they didn't want to go to school, but they learned everything that they were supposed to be learning and made tremendous, like, friends. And the teachers are amazing at ACS and I can't just praise enough about ACS. There are ups and downs, but all in all, like, it was really a wonderful blessing to my family and I have to mention Dr. Martinez and Mr. Brier and all the teaching staff and everybody there. Thank you.
Any other board members? Just have a couple things. So I know I mentioned it at the last meeting. So at the county SBA meeting, Isaac was recognized as becoming a certified board member and I guess they don't, I don't know why, but, so Noreen Wallace was also recognized for her 10 years of service on the board. Did you get your certificate that night?
No, no, it's going to be...
Okay, right. I think I was a little nervous that they weren't sending you one. Sorry, but the SBA did send a certificate which will give to Noreen as well as a PIN, recognize her 10 years of service.
10 years.
Yes, so we'll make sure that she gets that, but I just wanted to re-mention that again, like congratulate her and thank her for all the service that she's done for the board and for the school district. It's, 10 years is a long time, so we definitely want to appreciate that and thank her for that. I know she's not here, hopefully again, she can also watch this on YouTube. I also want to welcome Dr. Gaitens. Next meeting will be his first official meeting, once we actually get together again. But I know this, the majority of this board worked very hard through the selection process and I think the work that we've seen so far has proven that we've found a really great candidate. We're looking very forward very much to starting this school year and I think, I haven't, I've heard nothing but great news, not to put you up on too much of a pedestal, but we're looking forward to, you know, the various initiatives and changes that will be brought that, within the tolerances of what our community, you know, can handle. So, but very much looking forward to it. And then just last thing, congratulations to all the seniors. I say, I don't say it enough, but as a board member, we sit on the dais, we meet in committees for hours on end. I don't think we get to attend student activities enough. Being at the graduation tonight, you can feel the energy in the room. It's a reminder of why we're here, why we spend many hours with making decisions, passing the policies that we do. And it's just, it's great to see that next generation of young adults that's moving out there under, you know, after years of education by our teachers who have been awesome in helping them to develop, you know, under the guidance of our administrators. And it's just a great thing. And I love that the Communications Committee started putting together a list of events so that we can start to try to go to more of them. I honestly would like, I mean, I know a lot of them are on the community calendar, but, and you can find them on our website, but I'd like to try to push it out a little more to board members, even sporting events, you know, DECA events, even, you know, those types of things, all of the art shows. So it'd be great for, for the board to be able to get out to more. I know myself, I get to go to things at ACS and LMS because my kids are there, but I don't see so much at the high school and I'd love to be able to do more of that just because it's a constant reminder of why, like, why we do this work. So I just wanted to share that.
All your senior fundraisers.
Yes.
Talk of a friend now.
Okay, so any other board comments? Okay, seeing none, that brings us to our closed session. Can I have a motion to go into close, please? Anna, Isaac, all in favor? Any votes or concessions? Okay, we're now closed.